I call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. We stand for the pledge. Oh, the flag got put right in there if you look really hard.
Oh, oh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Do I have an action, action on the minutes from June 7th, 23?
Motion to approve?
Second. Any discussion? No? All in favor? All right, unanimous, great. Okay, I'll send around manifests, I think these manifest documents are going around. Nominations. Tom?
Sorry. I was looking for my computer bag. I think Troy has it.
Oh, no.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Nominations for this evening include Nicole Naumann, grade four teacher at Memorial School, and Melissa Wilson for grade six science.
Make a motion to accept.
Thank you.
Second. Great. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resignations?
We have three. Nicole Bartlett, music teacher. Amanda Tozier, fifth grade teacher at Memorial. And Taylor Shea, a school counselor at the middle school.
Make a motion to accept with regrets.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous. Superintendent's report.
I'm going to defer my time to the music trip for right now because they need to present. I want to get to that before seven.
Yep, yep. So my plan, if the rest of the board is okay with it, is to move 7.1 and 7.2 up to now so we can make sure we get that all in quickly. That's the LED lighting presentation and the music department. Anybody opposed? All right, great. I think we already have the LED set up with the projector. So we'll start with that one real quick. And then, um, yeah, if you want, or I can do. LED, is it an LED presentation on the LED projector? I don't know. I don't know. I'm gonna move, yeah. Oh, yeah, Jamie, you want to introduce? Thank you.
Yeah, so just so the people are aware, I've asked Ms. Jordi Valente to talk to us about LEDs. She's the product manager in charge of the business for all fluorescent and LED tubing in the United States and North America for Sylvania. And she's here to just give us some information about LED tubes, fluorescent tube comparison, savings, and then to entertain any questions we might have. And I think she left a very thick presentation, but we're not going to be going through all of that. She's got just a few selected slides, but she has graced us with her presence to help us out, and so we appreciate that and we welcome her.
Good evening. Is this on? Can you guys hear me? It's loud enough? Okay, thank you for having me. As Jamie said, I've had 27 years with Sylvania, now Led Vance. And as he mentioned, my current position is the product manager for everything that's linear, so fluorescent, the T-led replacements. I do have some information on fixtures. I'm not a fixture expert, but I do have some comparisons to run through, so you can flip. So basically, I think you've been discussing the lighting in the school system already. So some of the things you obviously want to consider is your overall budget. In New Hampshire, for New Hampshire saves, there are utility rebates, so you want to be looking for that and partnering with a distributor or contractor that can help you with all of that paperwork and make sure you're utilizing every resource available for your budget. Your timing, so the size and the labor availability, you need to consider if you've got in-house resources or if you need to hire contractors. One of the big things in considering this is what is, what is the condition of the existing fixtures? So if everything is in good condition, there are so many different options for you to go with just lamp and driver or ballast replacements. If you're going that way, you need to consider what are the age of the components? So if you've got an older ballast in that fixture, you're going to want to consider changing that as well. The recycling costs of what you're using or what you're taking out, and then some of the impacts to the environment. So as I said, I'm in the lamp replacement and driver business, so I feel very passionate about what we're putting into our waste stream. So part of that is if you're doing a lamp driver replacement, you're putting less product into the waste stream. When you're changing out your fixtures and going into new fixtures, they're not interchangeable components. And you need to be looking at, well, are we going to want to throw away all of these fixtures at the end of life, which could be five to seven years? So again, you just want to be aware of the different application spaces. Obviously, we're here in the library, so the ceilings are higher than maybe your classroom. So when you're choosing any light source, you want to make sure you've got the right light for the, the task. If you've got multiple use spaces, like cafeteria that might be used as an auditorium or a gymnasium, maybe you want dimmability or controls in those spaces. And then obviously, your hallways and stairwell is less, less important, but maybe you want occupancy sensors or some kind of controllability. The other things to consider is what are the hours of operation? This school is obviously being used after hours, but some of the elementary schools, you might be able to apply for additional longer warranties because you're operating hours or less, you'll get longer use of the systems. So again, the overall project cost in the budget is probably one of your most important factors. Choosing between replacement, if you have someone to do maintenance on the property once you have these fixtures or controls installed, or lamps and drivers, as it may, if you need controllability, some of the systems work much better if you're utilizing controls than others. I'll show you that in a minute. And then again, as I already mentioned, the long-term environmental impact. So if you're utilizing just LED T-leds or lamps and drivers or ballast, when you go to replace that, it's just going to be taking care of those components. If you go the fixture route, you will be looking at recycling or disposing of the entire fixture. I don't think BAA or TAA is a component for your school. Am I correct?
Not sure.
No, okay. Then it's not.
We quote you on that?
No, but I mean, it's generally, we have options in both for Buy America Act or TAA, which is a compliant country, a friendly country for sources. And in some military or municipality, they're looking for things like that that fall into that category. I think you would know. So again, just to compare some of your options up here, there's some pictures of lamps and drivers and then a fixture that you would recognize as traditional, and then a panel fixture, complete retrofit, or just a retrofit kit. So there's multiple different options. So what I did, not to go through every single product and all the different options, there's so many out there, but this chart is just going to show you kind of the relative cost of the choice that you make. So traditional lighting, they're still out there. You can still buy fluorescent lamps and ballast. They're obviously the most cost-effective. There's no utility rebate, so if you look at two lamps and a, and a ballast replacement in the existing fixture, you're talking about $17. That is an estimate of what your cost would be. Labor cost on that would be very minimal, especially if you're just doing lamps. So that's kind of how I set this up going across the board. The second section are your retrofit LED T8 or your T-led solutions. In that, there's multiple different things you can choose from. We have ballast compatible product, so you can theoretically remove the existing fluorescent lamp and put in a LED T8 that would operate on that ballast. That is your easiest method, except there's a few things to note. If the ballast is older or if it is not compatible, which it just depends, they're not all compatible like a fluorescent lamp, you'll need to check that ahead of time to make sure you're not ordering a lot of product and then having a compatibility issue. So that's your, your first column there, which is relatively inexpensive. The second column is called Type B. That would be an LED T8 product, but you bypass the ballast. So it takes a little more installation where your electrician or your laborer is going to disconnect the wires from the ballast. They're going to rewire the fixture so that the line and neutral go to the sockets themselves. As long as everything is in good working condition, it's a viable solution without having to add any additional components. This is going to be your most affordable retrofit solution versus a traditional. You no longer have the failure mode of the, the ballast in the fixture. You can leave it in there and cap the wires, or you can take it out and recycle it. Either way is acceptable. So again, you can see the relative cost is $13. There is a rebate, there is no rebate actually on Type B in, in this area. So again, that is going to be your net cost. The substitute, that is a, a system that is new drivers plus your lamp, so a little more labor, a little more cost, but it's still replaceable components. So five years or seven years down the road, when it's time to upgrade the lighting, again, you're just removing the lamps and the drivers, not the entire fixture. The next two sections are if you went the fixture route and panels are basically new fixtures, and then the retrofit kits are options for you to use the existing framework of your fixture, and, and it's like a new front. Both of these solutions are integrated, meaning the lamps and drivers cannot be removed. So when they're at their end of life, the entire systems, including the fixtures, go, go in the recycle bin or the land, waste landfill. So you can see the relative cost there. The panels are higher in labor. There are better rebates across the board. It's $20 per fixture. And I did all of the cost comparisons per fixture, not per lamp, assuming two lamp fixtures and one driver per fixture. So you can see, you're looking at a traditional solution of $17 with no rebate, and then your LED lamp solutions range from 13 to 26, and your fixture replacements can be anywhere from, say, $48, $50, or I think I see 39 up there, all the way to, say, $80. So is there any questions on, on that piece? I mean, this is really the bulk of, of, you know, what, what I'm here to show you, because I, yeah.
I have a question, but you might answer it in the future, so feel free to just.
Sure.
If you, when I look at this, I'm wondering if, why would, could you just tell the public why you would do the 76 or 71 or $80 option versus the $13 option, what the benefit is?
Yeah, so for me, I would say the benefit there would be if you're really trying to control the lighting, but you can also get that in the lamps. And it could just be aesthetics, because maybe you want to upgrade the look of what you're doing. In, in some cases, the utility rebates are much more lucrative. In your region, they're $20, which still seems very, very good, but it's not as, as generous as some of the other utilities that I've seen. So it really would be aesthetics.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can see the lumen and the wattage packages and the lumens. Across the board, the light output for the two, two by fours, what I'm comparing here, is, is relatively equal. The life is relatively equal. The difference would be if you were to go with one of our systems, there could be options to upgrade the warranty. Standard warranty is five years.
Okay.
And in these, all of these systems, except for the fluorescent, obviously, the failure mode is not going to be the light is out necessarily. It's going to be the light is dimmer. So you just need to be aware of when to rebudget that next upgrade.
Okay, thank you.
The, under T-led solutions, just so I'm clear, the, the LED lesson UL Type B?
Yes.
You're, you're bypassing the ballast. So I think in your earlier slide, average ballast life is five years? Is that what you have?
So average ballast life is not necessarily five years, but we recommend if your ballast is five years or older, you might want to consider upgrading it at the same time you're going into the fixture to replace the, the new lamp, just because the labor is already there. A lot of the older ballast might not be compatible with the current lamps for, for the LEDs, so.
And with that option, you're bypassing the ballast.
Right, and you're taking that right out of the equation. So two things benefit you there. You're not dealing with compatibility issues and you're not dealing with the failure mode of the ballast. The downside to that system is if you are dimming and you want controls, it's only dimmable at 120 on a face cut dimmer. So that is the, the drawback to that particular system. But for most of applications where you're not dimming or you have wall box dimmers, it will work.
It's like on or off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there increased labor cost down the road with this? Is there direct wired? Or, you know, when you replace them, it must be a little more complicated and just follow the.
It's a little more complicated. We have, and I, I think Jamie shared them in the past. I did include them on the Leave Behind. It's in the presentation, some YouTube videos. We did a lot of comparison to the, the time it takes. And it takes about an experienced installer. So again, the first few might take longer, but once they're in the mode or they've done it before, it can take about five minutes for, for our fixture. So it's not that labor intensive, but maintenance shouldn't be any different down the road. The key feature is the socket, so where the lamps are going into, as long as they're in good working condition, they should be fine. If they're not, they should be changed out to avoid any issues.
There is like a kind of a clip. Even though they're direct wired, it's not like they have to go.
They're still going into sockets.
They're still going in the sockets. The wiring is going to be done on the other side of the sockets. So this is just if you went the, the replacement lamp direction, the different types, as I had on the slide before, I didn't include the third one down, which is a combination of the compatible and the line voltage internal driver lamp. I think if you choose ahead of time which direction you're going with, you wouldn't want to put the extra cost into having the option to go compatible or line voltage. Some people like the idea of if they're servicing multiple different places in a day, that they'd have that on their truck, they could use it as ballast compatible. If it didn't work, they could then do the rewiring on the spot. But I wouldn't recommend that for your application, because I think you're going to know ahead of time which direction you would go. The other thing that's in our portfolio that I didn't include are selectable color temperatures. And, and on the fixture, there, there are selectable wattages and lumen packages. That might be interesting for you if you want to use one look and then drive the lumens up for the higher ceilings. Otherwise, it's additional cost. So that's basically that. And then again, the key attributes is just basically how much do you want to control that, the, the fixtures, the, the lamps and ballast and the application or the, and your installation? And then the warranty, as I noted before, it's a standard five-year warranty, but you can apply to, to have that increase based on the operating hours. So again, if you're dimming, the best type is probably your Type C in the lamps or your Type A with a dimmable system. Is there other questions? Yes.
You had, had prices up before, saying net costs?
Yes.
That was, that was product cost though, correct? That you didn't have.
Not labor, and I, I didn't have a good way to estimate the labor per se. I did it.
I just want that for clarification.
Relative to dollars, right. So I had a little dollar sign for the increasing cost. So the most expensive to retrofit are actually the retrofit kits. They, they take more effort than the panels, and lamps, lamps are not that labor intensive.
And just so people are aware, the, I circulated previously, there's a video where Ms. Valente also shows the difference between a direct wire and, and a standard lamp and the wiring and the changes there.
And that is in the Leave Behind. It's on. Behind these slides, there's a whole slew of product with all the details that you don't want me to bore you with. But if you want them to compare and for future, they're all there, and there's a slide with the videos and resources. Yes.
And, and your sales in the marketplace, what seems to be, where does the market seem to be going in, in terms of tubing?
So Type B is really where the growth is. So that's your type that you bypass the ballast and rewire it direct to the fixtures. A lot of people had reservations on that system years ago. We've been in that market since 2017 without any issues, and the issues would be shock hazard when you're wiring direct to the sockets. I mean, best practice, an electrician's always going to turn the power off, they're, they're never going to, what we call hot relamp. And we have patented safety features within our products that prevent any current flowing unless all pins are engaged. So we've taken all of that concern out, and 2017, so five, six years, we've been selling with no issues. So a lot of the customers have also come along with that philosophy. They've seen it's working, that there's no issues, and that the fast is growing for the LED T-leds.
And just for clarification, shock hazard, did you?
Yes, yeah. The other thing that we considered in that safety equation too, is if you have an in-house person, and maybe you have boxes of fluorescent lamps in the back that just were left over, and they went and reinstalled that into a fixture that's been rewired, we've done all that safety testing as well, and there, there's no issues with that. If they install it, 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 it just won't do much at all. You're not using 347, and even at 347, the test is that might burst the coil. Any other questions?
We might have questions after we have a facilities committee meeting in August.
Okay, that will be fine. And so as I mentioned, I'm a product manager, so I'm not your standard salesperson or your, we have an ESCO position, which is your energy savings specialist. So they would be the resources that I would, I would bring in and refer to you as well. And I don't know if you have a distributor partner, but we can, we can bring in agents, whatever representatives that might be helpful for you. You're welcome.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much.
We do, we're very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you can tell, we didn't rehearse the time. Transition suffered.
You did a great job, Rick.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you truly so much.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for that. That was really informative and super helpful. Great.
Thanks.
Mr. Lake?
Direct wire and stuff.
Well, you guys were now.
Nacho thing?
Yeah, the nacho thing.
I was going to adjust again.
All right, so I just want to take a quick second, because we have a new student council representative, and I would just like to introduce her. Actually, I'll let you introduce yourself, and we're really glad to have you here.
My name is Rebecca Trudeau, and like she said, I'm the new school board rep, and I'm going to be a senior in the fall.
Great, thank you so much for volunteering all your time.
Of course.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so now, if you would like to hook up to the projector, we'll move back out of the way, and we're going to do the Sanborn Regional High School Music Department for April 2024. Forgot we were going to have to move back. You staying?
Yeah. I just got settled in again. I'm going to maybe just turn the chair. The cushion is. Matt, I had that whole presentation.
Oh, no, it's not going to happen.
Where's the projector?
Jamie's like, I'll just crane.
Yeah.
Likes his coke. Builds character. Oh, my son knows, dude. Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I'm Rob Harrington. I'm the new choral director at Sanborn Regional Middle School, High School. And before I go on the record, I'm grateful for the first year I've had here in the district and the welcome, so thank you all.
We're glad to have you, Rob. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'd like to propose on behalf of Matt Brad, the band director, and myself, a trip to Disney World for April 18 through 21 of 2024. We've been in an extensive dialogue with Bob Rogers Travel, and Matt had used this travel company before COVID to plan a similar trip. We are looking at a three-night journey to Florida to be part of the Disney experience, which I've done eight times in previous districts, and it's always a wonderful experience. And we're looking at a cost for the three nights with pretty much all-inclusive. If we get 60 kids or more, 65 kids or more involved, of 1545 per student. And in today's market, I'll tell you, four years ago, this would have been four nights, but with rising travel costs and Disney's prices going way up, both Matt and I and the travel agency think this is a fair offer for what the, for the bang for the buck for the kiddos. I'll highlight that it's three out of the four theme parks throughout the four days, as well as an educational aspect where the kids would be actually performing soundtrack material for Disney films, providing the background music for. Last year, in my previous district, it was a little more made for the chorus, and the band did a Moana score for that film. And they actually got to learn the process of how they make musical scores for these films, and the actual recording of these scores, which is a huge educational plus for this trip. We will also be including three nights at the All-Star Sports Resort. Again, I shared all this with you guys in your, in your folders. Two out of three meals covered per day. So if the kids want a $10 breakfast at a $15, broken up between lunch and dinner, they would have all those meals covered, as well as the First Night at Planet Hollywood in Disney Springs, which is the marketplace area. It's been our first night there. Our travel agent is hoping to get us JetBlue or Southwest flights out of Logan, which is the most cost-effective way to travel, and that's why she is ballparking 500 bucks round trip. We have been told that it could spike as high, depending on how flights change, up to 1,700, or we're lowballing it in the hopes of being able to get a good lock-in on the flights, which brings you to those figures on the board now. We also have the safety net, and I'm very proud to present this piece of it on page five. On the right side, you see that if we are able to cancel 91 days or more before departure, and I counted the days on the calendar this morning, that's January 18th, 2024, we can get 100% refund on any monies we put toward the trip to that point. From that point on, we would lose a percentage of the funds. And in conclusion, I'll share that. I've shared with the Booster Club, the music boosters, they're all on board, and I've got a very excited Triumph group of honor music students who are also rather willing to get on board for fundraising and taking this trip forward, which is always a life-changing experience for our students. So with that, I propose that to the school board. Questions?
Will they get to do the march down in Disney? Is that something different?
This is not going to include a march. It'll include the soundtrack workshop.
Okay.
Good question, thank you.
First off, I want to say I'm really happy to see that we're, and I think we said this before, but just more trips and events coming back, so this seems really exciting. I was just wondering, how many students are typically in the band choral program? When you said 60, that just seemed like a high number to me.
The numbers are flexible right now, because we have our, our daily students, and we have our FLT groups, which are our advisory groups that come in two or three times a week. And that's how we're building our program up, is by having the kids come in during these advisory times to participate in the ensembles and be part of the big group, in the hopes that they will find the flexibility in the schedules in future years to be in the daily groups. And the numbers are looking much better as we move forward. Ma'am?
I have another question. Would this include middle school or just high school?
High school.
Okay.
High school band and chorus.
So you think we can get to the 60 number? That's what?
I'm fairly confident we're going to get there. This, this is a big carrot.
Yeah. I mean, you explained too of how you brought it up. I, I just, I wasn't sure.
Mm-hmm. I think, I think we're in good shape.
Yeah, good.
The initial numbers I've been seeing are, are very positive.
Yeah.
So thank you for the question, sir.
What are you using for funding mechanisms?
That is going to be totally based on precedent with the Booster Club that I have very little experience with in my first year here. My colleague unfortunately could not be here tonight because of a family emergency. He was ready to address those questions. But the boosters are excited for a few fundraisers already to move toward underwriting a part of this expense.
And Crystal's here, could she, is there anything you wanted to add, Crystal?
That's right, thank you.
What you know was needed, proposed to us, and we also said that we're doing a fundraiser that we're going to begin in the next year. If there's something you want to be telling them, we can share space and share all of your power.
That'd be great.
So I mean, if we know when the fundraisers are, we can, we can promote those on the page ourselves so that the word gets out further.
Sir?
How many teachers slash chaperones are going?
Again, I don't know precedent, but I'm assuming that my colleague would know that Bev and I or Jen might know better. The usual breakdown is of chaperone per student for a trip of this.
I think he wants to go.
Is there, yeah. And are you accepting applications?
No.
Micah would like to go.
They are comping, they are comping the directors, but I don't know what their policies for chaperones.
And I didn't see, like, it says they get one chaperone, but I didn't see what the breakdown was.
Yeah, there might be a cost involved with the chaperones, I'll be honest.
Yeah, I was, and we can follow up on this, I guess, but just thinking about the, you know, ratios more than cost. I was just wondering if there was a standard that we, you know?
My previous district, if it makes a difference, was ten to one.
Yeah, I would say typically for high school, ten to one.
Ten to one, okay.
Jen, what did you use for New York? She's over there behind the library.
Anywhere, a couple groups had like fifteen, but it was right around the ten to one. We don't. It's currently, by the way, because I scoured, I could not find anything on policy anywhere. There really isn't one, other than like the standard classroom thirty to, you know, legality piece.
Yep. Okay.
I'm writing that down, Jen.
That seems reasonable to me.
That level of kids.
Yeah.
The music kids and the good kids, if I may be blunt, and I'm fairly confident that they would be on their best behavior. When we were kids, we fooled you.
Make sure we we note that that was not a school board member that said that. Views of the high school music department do not reflect the views of the Sanborn district or school board.
I think this is amazing. I'd like to make a motion to approve this trip.
Second. Second. Oh.
Can I, Jamie, please?
Right. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
All in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you so very much.
Before Rob goes, I do want to take a minute just to say that I was hopeful that our chorus program would grow this year. I have attended the concerts. I've performed with the kids. The growth is amazing. Mr. Harrington needs to hear that from me to you, that I couldn't be happier with the direction the music program took under his lead for the choral, the choral part, and he's always helping out with the band. So it's not like Mr. Harrington has just said, this is my lane. This is what you hired me to do. He has stepped up every time on any occasion to help with anything, and it's just been super fun.
It did seem, when I asked that question, it did seem like the chorus concert was bigger. Like I
It is.
I felt like there were a lot more kids up there. So.
Yep. And Ms. Mitchinson is working hard with the master schedule to address issues that are impeding students with band. And we are having active conversations about it to help that get better, and that is a goal for us. We are very, very excited about the direction.
Thank you, sir. And thank you all for for many things, not just this presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Music Boosters.
Yes, thank you.
Really appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, so try to get back on track a little bit here. Yeah, some lights on.
And behold.
There's lights.
So.
These white lights.
Tom, do you want to do your superintendent's report?
We had skipped. Yeah, sure. I can give an update on the end of the year.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. We have had a very successful end of the year. And it's been an interesting couple of weeks because in addition to choosing the reading curriculum, working on hiring a new principal for Memorial, and working on a number of complicated professional development activities, including but not limited to, we had three days of training for our special education staff with Dr. Ross Green, which is, we are incredibly lucky to have someone like Ross in our organization helping us to deal with the the children who struggle with behavior and the staff who support them, most importantly. In addition to that, I just wanted everyone to know that I wanted to publicly thank Gordon Parks for stepping up two weeks in a row with an incredible number of power outages that have drastically affected our internet operations at a critical time. So we were leading into graduation, and three days before graduation, the internet system went completely down. Gordon had it up and running and ready to go. He spent a lot of weekends at the high school in the in the internet room fixing things. And I just can't say enough about, we came to work this Monday after a huge fire out on the road on the power, when the power transformer blew. And Gordon was here all day Saturday. I finally had to tell him, I'm giving you a rare direct order. You are to go home and be with your daughter for Father's Day. We'll figure it out if we have to Monday morning because your daughter needs to see you. And 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 he did that begrudgingly. Not his being with his daughter, but not getting, things worked. It was perfect Monday morning. He did it. And he did it. And he was with his daughter. So we were really grateful for that. In addition to that, I did want to also just take a moment to publicly thank Dr. Kennett and Christine DeRocher for working unbelievably hard to schedule meaningful P D on these five days. No P D event is perfect. Not everyone is getting everything they want. But I do believe that everything has received professional development in areas that they need. So it's gone very, very well in terms of the execution, and the principals have had a huge hand in that. We appreciate that. And the C K L A materials have been shared with staff for K five, and they are starting to work on unpacking that. Please remember that that this also aligns with our goals of improving a student student achievement academically in the sense that we have adopted a curriculum and now we have to unpack it. But that also meets the needs of the N I S C accreditation, which although it seems far away in December of twenty twenty four, when you count the number of actual days that staff have to work focused on it, there aren't many. Right? A year goes by, as you all know, very, very quickly. So being proactive and working hard this week to unpack and start planning the understanding by design, also known as U B D units, so that they're prepared and ready for N I S C in in December of twenty four, is a huge undertaking, and I can't thank the leadership of my team enough for their hard work on that. And just as importantly, thank you to the teachers. They have worked really hard this week, and I'm really grateful for their efforts. We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
All right. Do I have any subcommittee reports? All right, more?
Yes, I have one for Personnel Committee.
Great.
So we met on June seventh. Diana called the meeting order, and I was elected chairperson. We reviewed draft descriptions for principal, assistant principal at the high school, assistant principal of the middle school, and assistant principal of the elementary school. We made a couple of changes just to the language, and we unanimously voted with the amendments on the draft descriptions.
Great. Thank you. Jamie?
We had a finance subcommittee meeting just before this meeting. I'll get those those minutes out over the next week or so. Two important things to note, the estimate for the end of the year was about seven sixty three, but that might be impacted from further discussions here today. And we vacated the chair and elected a new chair of the Finance Committee, and that new chair is Micah Patel.
Jeremiah?
On June seventh, we had a Public Relations Subcommittee meeting. I was nominated as the chair of the Subcommittee. And items of note, two big ones. One of them was the discussion of our goals for the twenty three, twenty four season and everything in the district right now, making sure that our public relations team really comes up with a plan moving forward, how to best communicate in a timely fashion, in an appropriate fashion, what's happening with with the public. That was item number one. And the second big item was, we actually had the the P T O members show up with a conversation about the Homecoming Parade and plans about how to collaborate all of the P T Os and boosters all together and make sure there's good good communication and and conversation as much as they can to to really focus on those efforts moving forward to support the students here at Sanborn.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just follow up? I did meet, talk to Jen Mitchinson about that. And I found out that the reason why the Homecoming Parade wasn't happening was because when the music, when the boosters fell apart at the high school year, a few years ago, they didn't have enough adult volunteers, parents. So if the parents all band together and step up, she thinks that this is going to be a real win.
Yeah, because the parents used to make the
They have to make the floats. They have to show up. It's
They have to drive.
And she'll get back to me with the actual number, but I just wanted you to know I have been working on that.
Great. Thank you.
And we used to have tractor trailers towing our stuff. So, you know, everybody needs to step up here. When we were in Sanborn, when we were in school here, like, we literally had tractor trailer floats.
I don't want to drive the fire engine more. I want to
It was really cool. It was a big deal, and it was super cool. We went around the planes. It was a big deal. You would throw candy off of your floats. People would be around the planes. Kids loved it. I mean, it was great. It was a big deal. It was awesome.
Do you still have that duck boat?
Nope.
I'm sure there's something else.
Yeah, just
Crystal come up with something between.
I'm in for driving any of the Bashaw vehicles.
I got first dibs, brother. Ride with me. Be the co-pilot.
Go out to do a raffle.
All right, so we will move to first public comment. If anyone has anything to say pertaining to the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name, the town that you live in, and the agenda item that you are speaking to, and you have three minutes.
I just have a quick question. So Robbie Thicker, class of two thousand nine. So I just had a question about about it was about this time last year that Mrs. Rooney delivered a retention report on the district.
What town? What town are you from?
I'm originally from Fremont.
Okay, what town do you live in now?
I live in Massachusetts.
Okay. Our policy states you have to be Newton, Kingston, or Fremont resident to speak at public comments.
Even as an alumni and
Or a staff member, like a current staff member.
I've coached in this district.
You have to be a current
Been in that chair.
Current staff member.
Yeah, Robbie, I'll ask you the three big questions just to help you out. Number one, do you live in Newton, Kingston, or Fremont?
I don't.
Do you? Are you an employee of the district?
I'm not currently, no.
Okay. Are you? Do you have a student attending school in the district?
I don't.
Okay, then have a seat. Thank you. Nice to see you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, we move on. Okay, Tom and Gordon. Authorization to purchase I T network equipment and battery backup using the facilities used revolving fund or year end funds.
I'll give a I'll give a Jeannie, feel free to chime in. We we had a I'm gonna stop there.
Surprise, surprise.
Keep it up. I might have to put my foot back up. All right, so
You should be doing that anyway.
I know. I know. All right. So we had a finance committee meeting, and I did already allude to this in my superintendent's report. Gordon, we, at the finance committee meeting, we had a discussion that Gordon essentially needs authorization to purchase twenty thousand dollars roughly of equipment for surge protectors and switches. However, that is not adequate to move us away from the problem that we're facing. So the problem that we're facing is threefold. One is that our surge protection isn't isn't working the way it's supposed to. Number two, the backup battery packs are old. Right? Very old. And number three, there's a lot of very old equipment in the switches in the in the 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 server, and Gordon will talk about this more. So the proposal this evening is for us as a team to authorize Gordon up to one hundred thousand dollars with approval of the Finance Committee Chair and the Business Administrator and myself to address the the I T issues because we can't function without internet. We we the the reality is, is that three major weather events caused our computer system to take a really, really serious beating over the last three weeks. And I'll let Gordon answer the questions and talk about all this, but I just wanted to give you the context that it's an emergency.
And then let me chime in. So when Gordon reviewed with us, he had about sixty thousand dollars of things he needed immediately. And then we had a lot of questions, and we kind of looked at it and said, but what we had before proved insufficient to protect us. And with what he's requesting, he still says, I haven't had a chance to get the servers, and I still got other things to research. But right now, we're we're at risk. And Gordon clarified, we're not at risk for our data security. Our infrastructure is at risk. And so the I basically said, you don't have enough money on the table. And for me to say there's not enough money on the table, saying something because I'm cheap. But the he's not asking for, he wasn't asking for enough to build the defensive walls back up to protect us. And we also mentioned that if we had these UPSs, did it right that time? We had these UPSs that were were set to be able to protect us. And one of them is still only operating at half, and they didn't protect us. So we talked in the committee about, is there is there some front end that you could put in front of those to protect UPSs so that the whole system is protected? And so if we don't have a good valid reason for the hundred thousand, we just said, there needs to be authorization, and it has to be approved by the three people that that Tom mentioned in order to do something immediately to protect the system. If we get another lightning storm or another transformer goes out, we stand at risk to lose a hell of a lot more clip. So that's where that
And it really was like a a failure of like just a
Snowball effect.
Unintended, a perfect storm. He got things up and running before graduation, and some of the protections were no longer in place. And then what happened on Saturday happened, and it made it even worse. So I just want the public to understand that that there's been a failure in one of the backup batteries that provides surge protection, and then Gordon was working on that right when the second event occurred. It wasn't Gordon's, I cannot thank Gordon enough for what he's done. It has run absolutely smooth despite an absolute nightmare. I commend him. I'll put a letter in his file, an actual professional letter saying, Gordon, what you've done is gone above and beyond to keep this place running, and I commend you for that. I'll write him something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So normally, I would have a nice report for you with all these fancy links to click. And I didn't have enough time to do that. So what I have for you is that link that I shared with the UPS system quotes and the core switching quotes. So essentially, I am looking for sixty four hundred and fifty dollars to replace the two UPS systems. So essentially, in the server rack, we have two of these units. Each, almost every piece of equipment has redundant power, and one power supply goes to one UPS. The other goes to the second one. So that way, in case something does fail, it stays up. In the case of our problem, we had a blip of power. Neither stayed on. So what we had to do for that issue, well, we first walked in and they were off. We powered them back on. Everything came back online. Within five minutes later, literally opened the door to walk out. Everything went right back down. It's like, oh, no. So we ended up plugging everything into power strips, kind of divvying power through, you know, the different circuits in the computer room, which then, a few days later, I think it was Friday night before graduation, so a week before graduation, we had a lightning strike, which then took down our core switch. What this core switch does is basically routes the traffic internally without hitting the firewall, putting all the all the traffic onto the firewall and can route to all the servers. And it also routes all the traffic from the other schools and the S A U office to these servers. So essentially, right now, what what's in place is an old piece of equipment that can't handle that. It's pushing all the traffic to the firewall, which is then causing any incoming connections from other buildings to be slow, causing connections from here going out to be slow. So I am looking to replace the single core switch with two core switches for nine thousand nine hundred thirty four dollars and ten cents. So the two needs prior to this weekend was sixteen thousand three hundred eighty four dollars and ten cents. And then what happened on Friday was the fire went down, and the server never came back up. So essentially, I was able to restore almost everything to a server older than the server that died and got everything running on that. But now we're at a single point of failure with that server. So I had, back in September, October, got a server, storage, and top level switching quote done. And that came out at eighty thousand eight hundred sixty two dollars and fifty three cents. And that was basically, you know, not a definite, you know, this is what we would order. It was for budgetary purposes. So my guess is it'll it'll be a little lower because I think it's a little much for what we need. But that's, you know, a ballpark number to go by.
Gordon, I think it would be good also to share that you had, Gordon also had some concerns. So the second power outage, he came in and got everything up and running, and he plugged the system back into the same outlets, for lack of a better term. And there was something about the internal power that he's concerned about because it tripped it again, even when the power was up and running. So Dan is looking into that, but one thing the committee talked about is part of the reason why you hear Gordon say eighty thousand, but one hundred thousand was put on the table, is because we may need to buy some kind of surge protection for that one. So there's, it's a total unknown right now. He's, this all happened Saturday, and he had to have everything up and running Monday for all the teachers for the P D, and he did that. So he just hasn't had time to do So he just hasn't had time to do much more. We're trying to give him a little window here to work on it with everybody. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that the $100,000 isn't including anything in front of the computer room though. Cause we have, I, I mean, I honestly have no idea. That's a electrician type work and I wouldn't have a clue.
We'll have to find out what's going on. The, the electrical work would, might even fall.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, because I think, so we've, we've had four outages in that room and only two of them made sense, you know, in the last three weeks. We had a lightning strike and we had that fire. The first one that took out the UPS, no idea what happened. It was 2:00 in the afternoon. All of a sudden I get a call, hey, we have no internet. Come down, they said, you know, power flickered and the whole room was down. No idea what caused that. Then we had one after the, before the core switch, no, it was after the core switch died, that brought everything down, but luckily everything came back up. I have no idea what caused that one either. So I, I suspect that there might be some sort of, I don't know, short or something going on causing an issue.
Gonna figure it out. Yes.
Gordon, I don't want to unduly pump you up because you don't need it anymore, but you've done yeoman's work on this thing from getting us through that short-term loss and getting us through the end of the year. And then proposing all the work that you just did with us at the finance subcommittee meeting. So he's answered a ton of questions for us already, digging as deep as he can, as hard as he can. So I appreciate it. I know there's probably more questions, but I want to recognize what you've done so far.
Thank you.
Laura, did you?
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering, what are, what is the motion or whatnot at the table? I think because if I'm, is the $16,000 you're originally coming with? And then there's another $80,000. So I'm just wondering, is the $16,000 separate? Because if it's not, I think we need more than $100,000.
So the, the $16,384 is the UPS and the core switching. So that was what I needed prior to Friday. Then, you know, I told the finance committee what had happened Friday night and then I had numbers from the budget process for the replacement of the servers. So then that would be, I think, I think we're looking at that to be the authorize over the summer to spend up to X amount. And then the $16,384.10 is like, I need to buy that now, basically.
I'm just so, I mean, just 80 plus 16 is 96. I just, that just.
$97,200.
That's a lot of wiggle room if that's what, if we're authorizing $100,000, that includes the original 16. That's why I was asking if it's broken out. To me, and, and also I understand you said your original quote maybe had some more bells and whistles than we want, but I don't trust anything to be the same price that it, you know. I was expecting you to say something different, like my brain is immediate, immediately thinking it was $80,000 six months ago. Now it's 120. So I just.
Actually.
That's just kind of what, I'm just wondering if we're.
I can, I, I might be able to give you a little.
The board can authorize up to whatever amount they see fit out of the year-end funds. And my point was to build in a circuit breaker for transparency and for the community to know that finance chair, which is now Mica, myself and Matt will review this with Gordon and make a very careful, also confer with Dawn. Right? Just to make sure that there's, that it's carefully spent. Because my, my understanding was that the $16,000 was part of the $80,000. So that's my question. Is Gordon, is the $16,000 a part of the $80,000?
No, the $80,000 is just for the server aspect.
So then, then more, you're right, we probably should do 120.
Well, I, I can, I'm looking for right now.
I, I trust that you guys will diligently.
This is a serious issue.
That is a serious issue that I would hate for you guys to get stopped because you need 110 and we only authorized 100.
If you want to see the two things in the school district that will most affect student learning and the culture of the schools, number one is when the photocopier goes down. It's insane.
Oh, I know.
Number two is the internet. And number three is phones. Running, having run a K2 school for five years, the minute that photocopy, because the photocopy is the printer, the minute that goes down and then the internet goes down, it's bedlam. So this, and it's not just that, it's, it's the, the data, the student data, the student information, all the systems. It, it's everything. So I really appreciate your support on this and the good, that was a great question, more. Thank you.
Gordon's got something. So I can actually give you, so when I did the, for the budget purposes in the quote, I had included a new backup server as well. We've purchased that already. But in September, it was $6,500. When I just purchased it back end of April, it was $9,000.
There you go.
So it, it went up 2,500 bucks in a matter of eight months.
I just questioned, do we have this money in the year-end funds?
We do, we have 760.
I was just curious what we had in our year.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jamie just reported 763 and some odd dollars.
And then it might go down because of this.
Well, yes, this might bring it down.
So this is going to come from available appropriations throughout line items in our budget. Yeah, it's not going to come, it's, it's not the accumulation of, of the line items. So I'm, you know, if you authorize an amount, I'm just going to go find it and move it.
Okay, okay.
That's how it works.
But we, but I just want to make sure we have this.
We do, yes.
Okay.
And, and it will not raise taxes further. It just changes the amount that goes back to offset taxes.
That's, that was my next.
There's no additional appropriation.
Okay, just want to make sure. I, I agree though, Gordon, you've done a tremendous job and we thank you.
Thank you. Gordon, based on what you just looked up, what are you asking now? The 16 is, is the 16 and change plus up to what? Wouldn't be wise.
So it was, I don't know, what, what would be the math on that, I guess?
Based on the math of what you just said, the server went from 6,500 to 9,000, I think.
Well, how many do we need?
I think we're, I think like we need 125 to 140,000.
I agree.
Just not because I think we're going to spend that much, but again, we don't want you to get stuck dead in your tracks because we didn't over $5,000 or something.
And it's up to, it's not.
That's right.
Spend every penny of this.
Right.
And I will try and, you know, get the best pricing and, and.
And you always, you always work really hard to get the best pricing for us and, and we recognize that. So thank you.
But if it comes in high, we know where you live.
What was that? I didn't hear that.
Don't worry, we know how to find you.
I'll watch, I'll watch the tape back later.
But I think the superintendent is correct. As a district, like you cannot function without internet. Like our, if our internet goes down at work, the whole, like, place just stops.
Yeah, and everything.
When it, when it comes to the internet, so I, I, I want to be a little clear with like the servers. So, you know, internet, there's a lot more to internet in businesses, schools and at home where you just have a router from Comcast and you connect to it and you're out on, on the internet. You know, here we have the equipment from Comcast are consolidated. And we have a firewall in place, which is our security protection and allows us to configure where certain traffic can go, can't go. Then we have the core switching. And then we have servers, then we have all the wiring to the other switching, which then goes to access points all around the building. So there's a lot of different pieces when it comes to the internet with the equipment. And then on the server side, there's multiple servers that are built that allows us to allow those computers to go out. So typically at home, a Comcast modem will basically just do everything for you. Here we have servers and, and other aspects that basically put all those pieces together at an enter, enter, wow, enterprise level to be able to do what we do here. You know, and then we have file servers, we have print servers, you know, so there's a whole bunch to it more than just the internet.
It's a network.
If we could have a motion, we need to go to Mont.
Can I make a motion to allow $140,000 to be authorized by the finance chair superintendent, Matt Angel and Gordon Parks to replace the hardware they need.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, you nailed us. Thank you, Gordon. Thank you for all the hard work. All right, we have a non-public we have to go into at seven. We're actually a minute late. So I will call us into non-public per RSA 91A colon three, Roman numeral two, letters C and K.
Second.
All right, roll call in Heather.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Jeremiah.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Mica.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we'll take a quick, 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 quick recess.
For me, but I need to go.
Yeah, that's fine. Quick five minute and then we'll come right back.
All right, okay, so while we were offline and working on technical difficulties, we accepted a donation from Costco logistics for 384 backpacks for the elementary school.
Per year.
Per year. We also accepted a donation of $2,000 from New Hampshire Fishing Games for the Sandborne High School Sustainability Project. And so we wanted to say thank you so much publicly on video. Thank you so much for that. The generosity is amazing. We are grateful. We also signed a resolution allowing Matt to go and purchase the minivan to be used for special application.
Yes.
And now.
I have a motion.
Jamie has a motion for us.
I'd like to move to hire Eric Larkum as the memorial principal.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor? Yes. Thank you, who's the second on this? Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, of course.
Okay, um, so before we hit public comment, Jamie. I know, I saw. We want to say thank you. And I don't know if I can do this without getting emotional because you have put so much into our district, our towns, our students. I mean, what you have put in is beyond what any other board member has ever put in. The amount of time, effort, care. It's immeasurable. And we are eternally grateful for everything you've done for us. And I am so happy for your family and the opportunity that you are creating. But we're so sad to see. So thank you so much. Not enough words.
How much I owe you? Thank you. He's got white right to the end.
Jamie, just so you know, you can keep the chair pad as well.
We did not clear that. They're filth.
I'm not, until she approves.
I'm not touching that. Yeah, we're in trouble.
The ninth bomb.
Yeah, Sandborne Regional School District, and it's got an etching on it of the senator. I should put that up in my bar.
We should have gotten.
But it's too heavy for them to drink.
Yeah, it'll keep you in shape though.
All right. Well, we appreciate you very, very much.
And I, I just wanted to say, Jamie, all joking aside, you, you, some of the things that I value the most about working with you on this board is literally the drop dead arguments. The things that people don't see on camera. You and I have had some incredibly heated and tense conversations behind those doors. Go ahead. And, and what I love about it is that as we've gotten to know each other or in years that we've worked together, we, we were able to forge what I consider to be the most important type of relationship in America, which is one that models that we can come at things from a completely different point of view, but put the, the, the focus on the students and student achievement and find a way to meet each other close enough to the middle so that we could live with it without compromising to the point where it didn't have a good outcome. And that is what I believe America is supposed to be. We don't have to always agree, but we can work together. And I can't thank you enough for the parts that the people don't see on camera. And when I say heated, I mean heated. And, and it's, it's happened a couple of times in subcommittee meetings, but I adore you. And I will miss you and, and I really appreciate the times where you said to me in a very collaborative way, have you thought about this? Or when I led and things didn't go well, this is what happened. You never told me what to do. But you did tell me what you thought I should think about. And because of the way you said it, not what you said, it, it worked. Conversely, I'm very grateful that you listened to me. There were times when we had conversations and I, I felt like saying, oh my God, you gotta be kidding me. And then I checked myself and be like, well, have you seen it from this angle? And because of the way I approached you, you responded and there's been a deep mutual respect that I will value for the rest of my life. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. What a tough night.
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, where else can I go? I'll go.
No, thank you. I don't want to publicly. I don't know. Thank you, Jamie. I'll have words with you later.
Are those good words? Yeah, I'll have words with you later.
He's going to call me. I'm going to be getting text messages during board meetings, move forward. He's going away. He's not going away.
So there's still a file in your house that you still owe me a drink, right? Actually, it's in, it's in a storage unit. I think you're Oxford, that's the one. Oh, it's still unopened, sure, but anyway.
It's still unopened, yes.
But what I value is the fact that when, you know, when I consider running for the board, you opened your home to me and, you know, pretty long conversation. I don't think we've always agreed. But you've always brought to the table a well-thought-out, educated, factual response that made sense. Yeah, right? So that, that's what I value about you. You don't always have to agree with somebody, but coming to the table and offering an added value response and an opinion is irreplaceable and, and will be missed. And I appreciate it. Thank you. Welcome.
I'd like to, I'd like to concur with what Luke said. When I was a newer member, even before I joined the board and I was running, you always treated with kindness and respect and gave information. Always willing to have a conversation whether we agreed or disagreed. I'm going to miss your research skills because at this point, I don't think any of us research at the level that you research. But I've been really enjoying getting to know you both on a professional and personal level and I wish you luck.
This dovetails into my comments. I have a similar experience to Rick. When, you know, you opened your home, you had many long conversations about many, you know, intense topics which opened my eyes to things and it was again, so many factual, well-laid out things that was inspiring. I remember the day, there was a, there was a moment when I was considering running for school board and there was a position that was open and I remembered the thing that inspired me the most, and I may have told the story before. But it was the day that it was about when to open school backup or when to call, I can't remember, it was COVID times. And the board voted on something and Jamie vehemently disagreed with the, the position that was taken by the rest of the board and then voted with them. And I said, that's somebody who values, truly values collaboration, values togetherness, values unity and facing problems together even if you disagree. And that was, that was a great example of, of, you know, both. Something that I think we're trying to instill in, in school, which is rigor. Is a, you know, Jamie, you're operating on this board at a level of rigor that I've never seen on a school board. Really anywhere professionally, even. So it's, it's a model that we can all strive for. And we, yeah, thank you for that.
Jamie, you will be missed. You, uh, you're, you're the image for me for unity and commitment. And to echo what these two gentlemen just said, coming on the board, prior to that, just asking questions. You opened up your home, you were willing to have as many conversations as I needed. And you're the anomaly on this board. When we look around, you're the only one that doesn't currently have children in Sandborne. And that's what I mean by commitment. You made some personal decisions for the best of your children, which no parent can fault you for, myself included. And you stayed. And you stayed though. You didn't walk away and take your talents somewhere else. You saw this through till the end. And that is something that is purely lacking throughout our nation. And you were an example of what it meant to be unified and committed. And I thank you for everything. We haven't had a very long to work together. I would have liked it to be a lot longer. I really respect you and I appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna help finish it up, I guess. I'm gonna miss having someone to challenge me because having someone to help you sharpen your arguments always will end up with a better result. So thank you. So I suppose I'll make a statement at the table. Way off, way off. Got lost in the hole. No, I, I didn't really want to join the board. But there's a lot of things going on and I saw a number of people I respected joining. So I decided to run and was lucky enough to be elected, if you mean that. I was honored to serve. I had incorrect preconceptions of numerous things. I learned a lot when I talked to people. Heather, when she was first running her and I had a lot of discussions. Got to know her perspective a lot more than I had before. I think that there was a big split in the community between the, the dreaded, and KTA and the eagerly dreaded moms group. And I think what I have learned is this board and the people on this board, every one of the people on this board have helped me to be a better person, have helped me to understand things I didn't understand as well. And have worked towards what I think is in everybody's agreement as to the goal should be is we need a sustainable school system that will be supported by the community and we need to help our kids and we need to do what we can for them. And my eyes were opened and aided by the insights of each of you. And I appreciate that. I was glad to have learned through it. And I'm not only honored to have served, but I'm a far better person for having done so. Thank you. How's it going?
Somebody's been here all day.
Dr. Brown's been reading a lot.
I think once we pass ten o'clock, it's him with the fifteen second.
To the committee. I just want to thank everyone for your work this year and Jamie, I understand you plan to leave after tonight. But I just want to warn you that my neighbor is a Rockingham County sheriff. Whirling lights as you're attempting to leave town. What's going on? Anyway. It's such a loss that we're gonna see you leave. I met you back in 2015 when I moved to town and I saw this guy at the deliberative meetings with PowerPoint slides about the budget and you weren't, you were just making a public comment. But you had all of these slides ready and I thought, wow, this guy's really plugged into and concerned about the schools and money and how we're running things. And I was just so, I just so admired you. So having you lead is a huge loss of institutional knowledge in the short run. But we really appreciate everything you've done and wish you the best.
I, I saw those slides too and I thought this guy doesn't have any hobbies.
First thing I thought of was I want to meet his wife. How does she put up with this?
All right. Well, here. All right. So the next Sandborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty three at six PM in the Sandborn Regional High School Library. Meeting at the germ.